I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, January 24th, 2024. For those of you out there listening, you might be wondering why you'll be hearing me a lot tonight. So Marty Lindemeyer, there he is, First Selectman, right in Zoom world. We can see him right there. He is with us, so all three of us are actually here at the meeting, but Marty is not here physically, and he asked me to run this portion of the meeting here in town hall. So thank you so much, Marty. And if you need me to do something or another, just let me know if you are First Selectman, so I will listen to you. And also, for those out there, we have tried our best to keep the static and the echo to a minimum. So if you are having difficulty hearing us, please let us know, let us know in the chat, and we'll do our best. Joyce is on the call, so thank you. Agenda item number two, the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone may stand, please. Place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Agenda item number three, to approve and amend the agenda. So whether it's Marty, Lynn, I might have one, do we have any amendments out there for this agenda?
I'd like to add three things. I'd like to have under New Business Executive Session 9.1A labeled Personnel, so we can discuss the candidate for Park and Rec Director. And then under New Business 9.4, I'd like to add to discuss a possible new policy for the town to have debit cards for departments. And then under Old Business 10.6, I'd like to add the Kent Veterans Memorial Committee. We have correspondence, but we don't have it on the agenda, so, and since Andy's here, it'd be nice to be able to talk to him about it.
I will definitely think about all of those, especially the last one, because I thought the Kent Veterans Memorial Committee, we should talk about that. That's quite a long letter, and I got some questions, especially about that. So Marty, what do you think? Do you have any amendments or any questions or concerns?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you, if you can hear me.
Good. Yes, I can. You guys are perfectly clear on this side. I don't understand why we need the executive agenda. I thought we had talked about that. We're not, we're only getting the recommendation from the Park and Rec Commission on the director. I don't understand why we need to have an executive session. There's nothing that we're going to be able to add to it. We haven't met the individual, discussed, looked at any background and material to have anything specific to that individual that could not be in a public meeting and discussion. I don't understand that. I don't have an issue with the other ones at this point, but I don't understand why we have the executive committee.
So tonight, so this Park and Rec recommendation, are we going to move on this? Is this, I mean, they've made a recommendation, and so if we're going to vote on this tonight, I think I might have a few questions about the candidate, and, you know, just about the process of the candidates, and I don't know if all of that is suitable for the public. I think--
The process is not subject to executive session, but if you want the process explained, that's okay.
Well, maybe the process, but the actual person, you know, I mean, this is a big position, and I'd like to, I know nothing about this person in question, and--
And the motion that was approved by the Park and Rec Commission has very little information, and it has the candidate letter, and it has the amount of salary.
Your motion was to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to hire this person.
Yes.
So they're acting upon the recommendation. They're not given the opportunity to interview that particular person, is what Marty is saying, so--
Well, I mean, I don't want to put the person's name out. I don't want to say where the person is from, because I want, I'm hoping that the Board of Selectmen will allow us to, will make the offer to this candidate, and then all that information can come out in the public, once the person has a chance to talk to, to accept, hopefully, and then talk to their employer and stuff.
Okay, but we can't, we can't make a recommendation to hire somebody unless the public knows that information on the individual.
No, no. It's been done that way before, Marty, and I talked to Joyce about this. I said that we are going to do just the candidate with a letter, we're not going to say the person's name. That's why I wanted to have you be able to have a little bit of information about the person in executive session, so you could understand some of the reasoning why we thought this was the best candidate.
Okay, well, yeah, okay, I still don't understand. If the individual's the best candidate, that's the best candidate that the public should know. However, if you, if the recommendation is that, from the committee, and Lynn, and from yourself, to, there's a bit of privacy the individual has asked for while we're doing the interview process, we can do that, but I don't think we can actually act on it until the individual is ready to have his name put out, or her name, the individual's name put out into the public, so we could actually act on it. If you would rather, if you want to give us that information now in executive session, I'm okay, but I don't feel good about acting on that without the public understanding who it is and the background. Do you understand? Do you know what I'm saying on that one? Do you understand?
No, I don't, because that's been the practice that the Selectmen have used in the past, and I've been talking with Joyce about this. It's not like I made this up. It was done this way before.
Well, I'm not familiar with it being done this way before, Lynn, so if this, we, that, okay, that gets into the whole issue of the hiring process, which we really haven't come to a final conclusion on, on our hiring process. So I'm just, I'm not, I'm not in favor of going into executive session without the public know. I could go into executive session, discuss the individual, but I will not act, I will not vote to act on the individual until the public knows who we're going to bring into it, and that's how I want to view this. So that's, you know, you guys have, you're saying this, but I'm not, I'm not familiar with that or comfortable doing that, so. But I have no issue with your other amendments at all.
Okay, how about this? I'm going to say this. I just looked at our Board of Selectmen notes from the previous Board of Selectmen. One of the very first meetings I was in was January 10th, 2022, and we talked about the Park and Rec Director, and we went into executive session, and we talked about who we were going to hire, and then we came out and we accepted Jared Kaczynski. This is January 10th, 2022. So we've gone into executive session before, but I'll say this, I mean, if we're in disagreement about this right now, I'm okay if we just don't go into executive session tonight, if we don't want to move on this.
I do, I really want to move on this. Park and Rec is solidly behind this candidate, solidly behind this candidate, and the stress on the commission members when they don't have a director is very, very challenging. They are doing really, really well with this. They're getting the programs going, they're keeping things moving. We really need to act on this tonight. It's very important that we act on this tonight.
Then let's bring them, then let's bring the name into consideration for the public's review and make a decision. And if that's your recommendation, I don't see where I'm going to, I'm going to vote against the individual. So, you know, that's, you guys have done that work, Lynn, I understand that. I certainly appreciate all the work that you guys have done. You've done a great job pulling it all together during the holidays with Jared, you know, being here and not being here. You guys have done a great job. So if you're ready to recommend an individual, I'm ready to listen to you, and if you think that's a great recommendation, unless there's some specific thing that comes up, I'm ready to move on him tonight. But the name should go into the public record, unless that individual, again, is not ready to accept the job, and that's a different, that's a different thing, then--
We have not offered it to him. That's the, that is what the Board of Selectmen get to do, is they get to say, yes, we agree this should be the candidate, and then we make an offer to the person, which is part of the reason why a letter was used in the past. I can tell you as a reporter, sometimes I was the person letting the candidate know that they had gotten hired. That's not a good, that's not good if it doesn't, if somebody other than the Board of Selectmen is the one that's letting a person know that they were hired.
I understand that, and if we're, if we work on that recommendation tonight, then you can make that call right afterwards, right after the meeting, you know, before anybody else knows. If that's the individual, then we can follow up with the formal letter, but yeah, I think the process is just a little bit backwards, but anyway, that's my comments on that.
So Marty, you're ready to move on this without going into executive session?
Correct.
Do you, Lynn, feel comfortable about moving forward and making a vote on this without executive session?
Yeah, I can vote. I know this person.
Yeah, and this is, this is what I'm saying, Lynn. I trust, I trust your judgment, and I know how hard you worked. I've watched you pull this together, and the rest of the commission members. So if you feel this is the best person, I'm ready to say, give us a name, what your plan is for that individual, and let's go. I mean, it, you know, I don't, personally, I don't think I need to go back and relitigate or re, you know, validate the interview processes you've gone through. So that's what I'm saying. That's why I don't see the need for the executive session on this. You know, we have to trust each other's judgment, and I certainly trust yours, so.
Okay, I'm going to say this, that even though the last time we hired someone, we went into executive, I remember that distinctly, we have a bit of an impasse here. I'm, I'm going to say I'm ready to move on this, too, without executive. If that's okay with you, Marty, this is what you're, this is what you're saying.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to add two agenda items, discuss possible new policy debit card of under New Business 9.4, and Old Business 10.6, Kent Veterans Memorial Committee.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Thank you. So we've amended the agenda. Do we need to approve or okay with everything? So we're done. Okay. All right, thank you. So we have minutes. It's in the Google Drive. We've got minutes from December 27th, 2023, and January 11th, 2024. Those two meetings that we had, I did look at those, and I was okay with those. I don't know if anyone else has any issues with the minutes.
Nope.
Nope. Okay. May I hear a motion to accept the minutes from December and January?
Sound good.
Second. Any more discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Minutes are approved. We have correspondence. We have a January 12th, 2024, letter from Andrew Osef, along with letters to the previous Board of Selectmen. There's a few of these, I believe. So I'm just going to read the one that was to us, if that's okay, and I'd like to read this, and this will inform, actually, our agenda item that we just added.
I just want to apologize for last week, or, yeah, two weeks ago. I was sitting over there and--
No need to apologize, sir. No need to apologize. Thank you. But here is the letter, if I may read it. To First Selectman Marty Lindemeyer, Selectmen Lynn Worthington, and Lynn Sanchez. On July 13th, 2022, I sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen requesting that the town take over the ownership and responsibility of the Veterans Monument. I also provided background information on when the Veterans Memorial Committee commenced in 2007. I've attached a copy of that letter. I've also enclosed copies of the Veterans Memorial Committee minutes of our last meeting on November 2nd, 2022. In those minutes in December 2020, Charlotte Lindsay stated that a local business inquired about using the Civil War monument to advertise an upcoming event that she wanted clearly defined to the public. Charlotte drafted a statement that the late John Blank, a judan of the American Legion for 50 years, had made this official. In one of our meetings in 2020, the committee voted on this issue that was approved and sent to the Board of Selectmen. However, we did not consider at that time adding the solicitation of funds. On November 2nd, 2022, as one of our last official acts, the Veterans Committee voted all in favor that, quote, "No monies will be collected at the Veterans Monument, the Civil War Monument, or the large stone monument in front of the library," unquote. The Veterans Committee also requested that the Board of Selectmen appoint a subcommittee to follow the criteria that had been initiated in 2007, and to vote on potential veterans that may be added in the future. The Board of Selectmen approved all of our requests and appointed myself, Mike Van Valkenburg, Patty Billcase, to the newly formed Veterans Committee. Selectman Rufus Duran was appointed as a selectman to the Veterans Committee. With the approval of the Veterans Committee, I was appointed this chairman. I've also enclosed a document dated November 2nd, 2022, signed by me, that was a formal transfer of responsibility for the care, maintenance, custody, and control of the Veterans Monument to the town. On January 3rd, 2023, the Veterans Memorial account at Union Savings Bank was closed, and the balance of $2,983.46 payable to the Town of Kent was placed into a Veterans account. The newly created subcommittee of the Veterans Committee are requesting this Selectmen's meeting to establish the direction and the role of responsibility to the monuments. We also want to review the past expenditures from the Veterans account. Sincerely, Andrew C. Osef, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that is in the Google Drive for all to read, and I think later on in this meeting, we shall talk about that, and you'll have a chance to speak, so thank you. Okay. Any other questions about correspondence? Okay. Any public comments now, only on the agenda items tonight, and question, if you would, please feel free to stand up and talk, or if there's anyone out there in Zoom land, or too many, please let us know.
My God.
If you would like to speak to this particular issue for a little bit, sure. Thank you.
I got two minutes, right? I'll do it quickly.
Two minutes. Who's--
1966, the town of Kent, where we had $8,000, got a resident trooper. Trooper Robert Boyd was the first resident, I was the second serving from July 68 to--
I'm sorry, that's not on the agenda. That's not on the agenda. That's public comment.
Yeah, I think if you want to speak to the monument issue, but I think the second trooper issue would be at the end of the meeting, so if that's okay.
Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you, Marty. Yep, so you will have a, you will have an opportunity to speak at it.
Okay.
Okay, so seeing no one else for public comments, there are tax refunds. So if I can get the tax refunds up here, there are only two tax refunds for January 2024, for a total of $596.07. If you have a chance to see that, both Marty and Lynn, if there's any questions, I'd like to hear a motion.
I'd love that we approve the tax refunds as presented.
I'll second that.
Yep.
So all in favor of accepting the tax refunds for January 2024? Say aye.
Agree.
Unanimous. Thank you. Passed. Okay, so tax refunds, that is done. I don't know if Barbara is on, but Agenda Item Eight is the Treasury Reports. Barbara Herbst, are you out there?
Yes, I am.
Well, thank you.
I'll try to do a screen share. Let's see. So currently, I'm sharing my screen. This is the Treasures Report. It's my typical report. I don't know if you can see it where you're sitting.
We can.
Okay. So the very top of the report is the activity, volume, and the dollars associated with that activity for each different category. The middle section of the report is the actual versus budget, and the very bottom of the report are just some general notes on this activity. I did point out in my last report, I think for December, that the paramedic line is already over budget. It wasn't budgeted properly. It was budgeted at $135,380. The expenditure came in at $154,183, and I believe there was some misunderstanding when the information was presented to Jean, and I hate to say this because she's not even here to talk about it herself anymore, but anyway, the expenditure came in higher than what was budgeted. And to reiterate, the EMS staffing is expected to go over budget based on the trending from the expenditures that we're seeing at this point. So that is my standard Treasures Report. The second page of the report is usually, I just give you a synopsis of what's going on in the building department, because the building permits that are issued do affect the grand list, which does affect the mill rate, which in turn does affect taxes. So year-to-date through the end of December, $16,94,751 were issued in building permit value. That's 271 permits. I want to stress that that does not mean that that will equate to that value being turned right into the grand list, however, some, it will affect the grand list in some way. There is usually some movement on the grand list. I also like to compare this information to the same time period last year. That's a little bit further down on the report right here. Oh, sorry, it doesn't, I don't have a pointer. So the building permit value that has been issued year-to-date is a little bit lower than it was a year ago, about 20 less permits than the same period of last year. The other document that I have, and I think I've got to stop share in order to share that one, is this. Oh, no. Sorry. Doing a little bit of Zoom crazy. The budget document, I have been working on that. I hope to release it this Friday. At this point, 41 out of the 65 categories have, I've received information. However, some of the information I've received has not been complete. There are some TBD, to-be-determined lines, different departments, don't have all the information yet because it's so early, but approximately 63% of the information has been received. That's over half, so it will be reasonable now to actually release what the proposed budget is starting to look like. The biggest pieces of the proposed budget are usually the Board of Ed, DPW, and some of the expenditures for the police protection and not emergency management, the fire department, and paramedic. I don't have the paramedic piece yet. I don't have the EMS piece yet. I don't have the Board of Ed piece yet. So those are three big pieces of the budget that we won't have for a little bit, but I just wanted to point that out. I will be putting another shared folder on the town website with a budget document and all the supporting documents for everyone's perusal, so that's where I'm at. And I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
So those shortfalls with the paramedic line and EMS staffing this month, is this something that's going to continue?
That's not a this month, that's a year-to-date.
That's a year-to-date, yep.
The, the paramedic is a one-time appropriation, and you were on the board, actually, so you may remember that when that was budgeted, it wasn't budgeted properly, so that's a one-time expenditure. That won't change between now and the end of the year. The EMS staffing is subject to availability of volunteers, so I try to do a trending analysis, which I've done, and based on my trending analysis, at this point, there's an expectation that there will need to be an additional appropriation of approximately $93,000 for that expenditure. That's in keeping with the prior year where there was $100,000 additional appropriation in the middle of the year for it, so does that answer your question?
That does indeed. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay?
Yeah, I did.
Yes. Lynn has one.
Is the, is the transportation fees being down, is that a worry at all? I mean, is the same amount of permits sold this year as compared to last year, or has it gone down?
The fees are lower because we reduced them specifically because of the food scrap program, and so that's why they're lower this year.
Okay, thank you.
Marty, anything else? You're okay? All right.
Barbara, is there any way you can get us this report monthly before our meeting, so we can have it in the folder, like 48 hours in advance?
I'll do my best. I didn't even remember until Joyce was talking about the Selectmen's meeting today, so was put in your folder this afternoon, but you actually had this report already when you went to the Board of Finance meeting last week.
Right.
So you had it 48 hours in advance, for sure.
Yeah, but the public didn't, for looking for it for our meeting.
Lynn, we'll make, we'll make that, we'll make that effort better. Yeah, we will, yeah, I'll work, make sure, I'd stop by Barbara's office to make sure we get that in time, and, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. It would be appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so on to Agenda Item Nine, New Business 9.1, Park and Rec Recommendation for Park and Rec Director. I think I will give this to Lynn.
Okay. So the Park and Rec formed a search committee. The committee had its first meeting December 13th, and we began, so, you know, asking for resumes. We had a total of 45 resumes that were received. We narrowed that list down to seven different candidates that we interviewed on Zoom, and we narrowed that list down even further to three finalist candidates. We, we met with all of those three finalists, took them on a tour of the, of the three parks, oh, well, the two parks and the ballfields behind Kent Center School last Saturday. I think it was the coldest that I've been in years. But they, all, all the candidates were great sports, and so we talked to them about, you know, what the thoughts and the plans were, and a lot of them had great ideas, so. And then we, the search committee made a recommendation, it was unanimous, and then the Park and Rec Commission on Monday agreed to recommend, and I'll read the motion that they, that they passed. The Park and Rec Commission recommends to the Board of Selectmen that Candidate D be hired as the new Park and Rec Director, and that the position be offered at a salary of $63,000, with the understanding that there wouldn't, would not be a percentage increase to the salary in the fiscal year 25 operating budget. So Candidate D's name is Matthew Bussie.
Good. I didn't quite hear that, but my, my ears are plugged. Is it, would you spell his last name, would you mind?
B-U-S-S-E.
Oh, let's see. Okay. Thank you. So you're pretty confident? This is, I know you're confident, I'm not, I don't mean to say it that way. You guys did a great, I did, I want to say this, you know, publicly along line, this is a tough time to do it in, both, you know, a lot of people knew, some changes to the commission, Park and Rec Commission, Lynn stepped in and helped out a lot. I saw them outside my door, going into the Park and Rec office daily, and I know they had numerous meetings, and to have that many resumes, and to actually whittle it down to those good candidates, I'm confident that this commission subcommittee on hiring has done a very good job, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I should salute, I should salute the people that were on the committee. It was me, I was the chair, Rufus Duran, we had two different people from the public, Bethany Keck and Miranda Lovato, and all four of us worked really well together. So I will, I will make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Park and Rec Commission that the, that the towns hire, make an offer to Matthew Bussie as the new Park and Rec Reation Director, and the position be offered at a salary of $63,000, with the understanding that there would not be a percentage increase to the salary in the fiscal year 25 operating budget.
Second.
I second that.
And the reason that I actually felt strongly about putting that in, because I remember the last time we hired somebody, there was a lot of pushback and bad feelings because there were-- because the there was the person was set to get a percentage increase less than six months after being hired. So I thought as long as you're upfront with somebody, I'm sure people are going to understand that that's that's the way it is.
Yeah, that's a good point. It was well done.
Okay. Any further discussion or comment?
Nope.
Do we have a potential start date? You haven't discussed?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's good.
I would say I would hope that he could start within two weeks. But that I was going to find out tonight.
So the hope is within two weeks.
On or before? Add that into the motion?
Yeah, we probably start that.
Yeah, so I'll change my slightly amend my motion that we would hire him on or before on or before February ninth. That will be just slightly over.
Eight, yeah. Even I.
February eighth, okay, sorry. I don't know what day of the week it is.
Do we need to vote on that amendment or are we okay?
I'll second the amended amendment to honor before the ninth of February.
Eight, February eighth.
Sorry, eight, February eighth, okay.
Okay, motion is amended. All in favor?
Be amended.
amended, yeah.
Okay.
You updated, aye?
Then you have to, oh, full motion.
So now the full motion. So now so now we have to accept this motion and the other. That's it? Okay, all vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Commission. Thank you, Marty. So there we go. We have a new park and rec director. That is new business nine one. New business nine point two, budget set schedule. So we have a budget coming up. And we have to set a schedule, it seems. So Marty, this is on the agenda. Did you have something in mind with this?
No, you're muted.
Oh, you're muted, Marty.
Yeah, because we don't have the full budget yet, I'd like to get the indulgence of the Board of Selectmen to give me a chance to get the final budget together, take a chance to look at it and then make make my recommendations to you and present the budget to you, much like we did the capital plan to the Board of Selectmen. So I'd like to actually table the schedule of this and allow me to do that and then we'll do it. One of the things I'm thinking about, if I can get it in time and have time to do it next week, would be to, we have the projected time with the Swift House that we could meet after that back if we're still all available to meet back here. And at that point, if I have a chance to get, I believe I will have a chance to get the budget and looked at. I can present it to you and we could actually do it as a second part of our meeting with the Swift House Task Force on that same day, that next Friday, the second. That way, we're not wasting any, you know, not wasting time, but we're not spending any more time. We're actually getting to it. But if the trend goes that I'm thinking it might go, we might need a lot less meetings than we would set up here without knowing what the budget is. And I'd rather have it a little bit more understanding of my side anyway, what the budget exactly is going to be. So I could present it to you and then with your recommendations discussion, we could actually set up what we think is an appropriate amount of meetings. So we're not overstressing the your time, our time and the budget time without knowing or, you know, the people that are going to be coming to the budget without knowing exactly what the budget is. That makes sense?
Yes. So you're saying that the second half, that Friday, February second meeting, so four o'clock, we meet at Swift House. We'll be there for a certain amount of time and then we'll come here and you will present to us. Yeah, we'll talk about a schedule.
Yeah, we'll adjourn from the Swift House like we did the other day for the Park and Rec meeting and reconvene in the large room, open it up, get in the public in that point. Hopefully, I'll have gotten the whole thing from Barbara or enough of it anyway to start the process and I can present it to you at that point. And then we could set the schedule.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, great.
All right. Okay. All right. We don't think we need a motion because we haven't really said anything, but I'll just reset this for the agenda on the second when we when we set up that meeting.
Okay, great.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you, Marty. All right, no more on budget? We are at nine point three appointments. We have, I don't know if it's appointment or a reappointment to the historic district commission. Ann Todd for a five-year term expires January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine. I don't know if if we need to discuss this.
It's a reappointment.
It's a reappointment. It's a reappointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ann Todd to the historic district commission.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, then we add a nine point four to this to this agenda. Discuss possible new policy regarding debit cards. So I'll give this to Lynn.
So I this came up when I was talking, you know, talking to people who are working in town hall and and I did talk to Barbara about this a while ago. But I I'm troubled that the town may be forcing people to spend their own money and get reimbursed. I mean, I think we're we're a big enough organization that we should, I really think it's important that we we have debit cards that are issued to department heads, directors. I don't want our new Park and Rec Director to have to spend his own money and get reimbursed. It just doesn't seem like the right way to go. So I would like to make a, I would I would suggest a policy that we that the town account allowed departments to have a debit card from the town's bank account. I don't know if it needs to be more complicated than that. I you're muted, Marty.
I was just going to ask Barbara, I know there are some debit cards available to a couple. I think Social Services has a debit card or is supposed to have a debit card. I don't know if you looked at this across the, you know, all the departments, but.
So the social service department has a debit card that's associated with the Food and Fuel Fund, which is not municipal money. That's donated money that's completely separate. If you wanted to produce a policy where different departments could have access to some sort of a prepaid card, it wouldn't necessarily be a debit card. That would be just asking for trouble. It would have to be some sort of a prepaid card that they could use, but there needs to be some kind of criteria set up as to who gets to use the card, in what circumstances, how much is going to be loaded onto these prepaid cards? What's the mechanism to reclaim the card if it's not being used properly? I believe that the auditor should be consulted on this. I believe the Board of Finance needs to be consulted on this. And we in the past had a procedure where annually a vendor list was approved by the Board of Selectmen. So that will need to be thought about if that's a situation that you want to continue. How does that play into people having prepaid cards where they can spend it anywhere, you know, off that approved vendor list? And also, the state statute requires that a majority of the selectmen approve the expenditures. That's the whole point of the manifest that gets sent around. So we would have to be mindful of somehow incorporating an approval process, which I think may be able to be covered with a robust policy covering the prepaid debit cards. But again, I don't think it's as easy as just calling up the bank and saying, we'd like to have these cards. I think there's a little thought process that needs to go into it.
So right now, people use their own credit cards? They use their own money and get reimbursed?
It depends on what they are trying to do.
Okay.
But there there is an accounts at many, many vendors, many local vendors where people can go in and and I'll use the Ace Hardware as an example. They can go in, get what they need, put it on the town account. And then when the bill comes in, Joyce codes the bill so that things go to get charged off to the right department. We have an account at Amazon. We have accounts at many, many vendors. We don't have accounts at every vendor. And we don't have accounts usually when people are searching around online and they find somewhere they want to buy. And I'll make up a scenario stickers. Oh, we need these stickers. And we need to buy them from sticker envy. And we don't have an account with sticker envy. So their option is to either purchase it with a purchase order, which they would have to get through my office. Or if they need it right then and there, then some people have opted to use their own money to purchase whatever and then submit a reimbursement request.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, Barbara. I think, well, this is a it's probably a little bit of homework we have to do on it, but that's okay. I think we can. I have no issue with moving forward on this, Lynn, and every barber as well. And and seeing what we can come up with, see where the seams are if there's. And I've heard the same thing and I, you know, use my own money at times to do things. So but I think we can, I think we could take a look at this and see if we can't come to, you know, an understanding of exactly where in the prepaid cards system would be helpful. And and maybe it's targeted to certain departments over others. But, you know, if there's if there's some department that's spending a lot more of their own money trying new things and we add people to the vendor list or we look at a prepaid card. But yeah, I'm okay with, I think we could go forward to examine what we have to do and and then talk to the Board of Finance and look at the state statutes and so on. And and move forward and see where we can, if we can make this this work. It sounds it sounds actually, you know, doable for sure, I think.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll leave this on the agenda for next time and we'll see what happens. So thank you, Marty and Barbara.
Yep.
Okay, so we got all, sorry?
I just wanted to say, just to make sure we continue this, let's continue this. And we'll take a look at what we need to do. I'm going to have a, I guess, a meeting. I was talking to Joyce yesterday when I could talk about having a department meeting again. We had had one earlier. We should have one every couple of months. And we'll bring this up with them as well and then start looking at the process and the and the requirements and issues that each department has. And then we'll bring it back to the board and and figure out how we go forward to look at how we do a policy on this. Is that is that suitable for you guys?
Yeah, very, very. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Okay, next item, old business ten point one, Emergency Management Director and Deputy Emergency Management Director. I'll just say one thing first, and that's to say that, you know, the last time we talked about this, I felt I felt the need to to put this out there to the public for two weeks on the on the website and and that happened. So so thank you, Marty and everybody for that. That's something we talked about and that happened. So so I'll leave it to you, Marty. I think you probably have more information than than we have about this.
Sure, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Yeah, we did. We put it out for for two weeks. We did get a couple of candidates. And I've worked with with everybody knows Eric Epstein is is a Deputy Emergency Management Director. He's the one that's been shouldering a lot of the load over the last couple of months with some of the the issues we've had going on, working with the state, with Demis, the partner emergency services and homeland security, as well as our local ever-source folks and our town public works guys and the state as well. But so we did interview Eric and I interviewed an individual yesterday for the emergency management director. And I'm going to put his name forward as my choice to to fill that role, and that is Brian Hunt. Brian Hunt is a longtime member of the community here, pass fire firefighter here within KVFD. Also, emergency management director back as the beginning of the emergency management program. In fact, I believe it was two thousand twelve to sixteen, he served in that role. And he left, they left for sunnier shores in Georgia, realized there's just as many issues down there as up here, came back. His wife is working up at Marblewood. He does have a business working in emergency management and special, I guess, EMS type support. He works with one of our districts. We're in District Five. If you're familiar with how the state breaks down their emergency management programs and support, there's five districts. We're the the biggest one up here, of course, in the Northwest. He does work a couple of days a week with District Two. District Five is out of Waterbury. So so I'm going to put Brian's name on there and we're going to already offered him the position and he has accepted based on my responsibility to do that, but I appreciate the board's interest in making sure we cast that net as wide as we could. Brian, I think, like I said, we interviewed him yesterday, had a good talk. I've heard his name before, talked to some people about him when he did apply. So I think he's going to be a great addition. I see him on the the on the Zoom today. If anyone has a question or anything to him, I'd open that up for you. As far as the deputy, the deputy position is, where there's an individual tomorrow. If I can get drink enough tea and honey, I'll meet him at eight thirty tomorrow morning and interview that individual. But I'm very positive in this individual as well. So I think we will have a team in place by tomorrow. So hopefully, the next storm, we'll have folks ready to go. There's also a series of, I do want you to know, there's a series of training programs that these will, both the, all the individuals will undergo, including myself as the first selectman. There's some in April, there's some between now and then. We're going to be meeting with the Region Five Director, John Fields, very soon, within the next couple of weeks, probably at least by mid-February. And the team will meet with with him. He wants to come up and see us up here. So, yeah, I really feel very good. And we'll be meeting also with the Fire Department and others who are, you know, obviously a big part of our emergency management team here in Kent. So but if anybody has anything to Brian, he's he's right on if you want to ask him any question.
Hello, Brian Hunt.
Yeah, here you go.
There he is. Welcome, welcome back to the fold, Brian Hunt.
Sorry, I was on mute. I made a Halo joke and nobody even heard it.
Welcome, welcome back to the town of Kent. Thank you so much for showing interest and and doing this again. So, I'm sorry, when was the last time you were emergency management director? What year was that?
I was in from twenty twelve to twenty seventeen.
Twelve to seventeen.
Yep.
Do you see any changes or, you know, from the last time? I mean, and then I mean, talking to Marty and everything, is it going to be about the same position? Has anything changed since last time, do you think, or it's about?
I'm sure it hasn't gotten easier. There's, you know, there's, we've kind of identified a couple of things yesterday that, you know, that we'll that I'll focus on initially and get things caught up. But everything should be, you know, pretty well, pretty well off.
Good. Okay, and then and then we'll, you know, Marty here will try to get you a deputy. Marty, keep drinking the tea, eight thirty tomorrow. So that'll be great. So but truly, thank you. Thanks to both of you for making this work. And and a huge thank to Eric Epstein for for doing this for the two years plus that I've been in Selectmen. So I thank him for all the work as well. So it's great.
I'll be I'll be going to to the hardware store to get some duct tape so he doesn't get away too easy.
Thank you, Brian, for stepping up. We really appreciate it.
Look forward to it.
Great. All right.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. I look forward to working with him. And yeah, we're not going to let Eric get too far away for sure, but we'll try to take a little bit of load off his shoulders. He is doing great. So. Any other questions regarding emergency management director, deputy?
That's all I have. Good luck tomorrow. All right, thank you, Brian. All right, so next agenda item, ten point two, broadband subcommittee. I will defer to someone who knows a bit more about this. I do know at a prior meeting, we talked about maybe reconstituting the broadband subcommittee. I think that was in the minutes I read. So so Marty, I'll leave this to you if you've got some work here.
Yeah, that's exactly it. And and we've all discussed that Lynn's mentioned the same thing before. I went back and looked at the, and actually, we put the, I think we put the minutes in there. The broadband working group minutes were from September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And the Board of Select did make a recommendation for a committee with with a charge to that committee. I think we really need to relook at this a little bit. But and then cast in that there's, I've had a few people approach me about interested in doing that. I've had some emails questioning about it. We did put out the diversity, excuse me, the equity. message from the state regarding our broadband and broadband equity. And it's certainly something that that fits in our community, rural elderly individuals. Different aspects to to the state's plan to increase our equity and access to high speed. This is not just broadband, but it's access to high speed broadband where folks and businesses and so on can come up. So the the whole thing is is it's really large. We've got a lot of people from the different areas, especially Sharon, that has worked very hard to pull this together. I met with with Casey Flanagan, the first selectman at Sharon. His wife was very much leading a lot of that committee. And he's expressed his desire to help us out and offer, you know, assistance along the way. So I think we need to go back and redo this. So what I'd like to recommend to the board right now is that, like we've done with a lot of other committees and so on, we we put out a request for individuals to submit a letter, a short letter of interest, a little background, and then send it to us and the board and we can meet. And and actually select that, look at discussion. And and certainly I have experience with with broadband and with 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 international internet systems and so on. And would be happy to help that. And and also just bring folks in and take a look at that. Now, as far as the committee goes, I know Lynn is very interested in that committee. I know she's been doing a lot to get the park and rec up. I'm not sure if if she's seen her house lately with some of the the stuff she's been going on, but certainly we'll talk as a board. I don't necessarily see that I need to be on that committee, anything more than to help organize and how the committee goes forward and then actually to do that. So we can, we can look at at one of our board of selectmen actually being a part of that committee. But I think also let the the experts that we get, and I think we have quite a few in the town that could could move us forward and get this going again. I I went back to look if there was any meetings from this group and there was no, none that I could find any, no minutes or or understanding that any of the meetings have been set up. So reconstituting this, I think we haven't, we didn't dissolve this, but I'm ready to reconstitute it without a whole lot of extra fanfare and just update the charge and go forward. So we could put that together for again, one of our, I'm not going to shove it, be able to get it on the second of our meeting on the second, but I believe we'll probably have a meeting after that. At that point, as soon as we can, I like to move this to the board for for further discussion. But if you work tonight to allow me to put out the the request for interest, we can do that. And then we could start pulling that, the numbers are together and people together, if that makes sense to you all.
It does make sense. I am, I think a lot of my work with Park and Rec may be settling down now that we've hired a director. So I do want to be on this this group. I also wanted to let you know that I've had some conversations with at least one expert and he did some researches. We're going to need to allocate a little bit of money to this group. Because the idea is that we're going to want to host a section of a website, a connection to the website. And so when we're thinking about this, I would like us to be able to allocate up to $800 for the remainder of this fiscal year. And then ask the committee to come back with a budget recommendation for next year, for fiscal year twenty fives. Of what it might, what kind of money they might need. Because this kind of stuff can always happen for free. So we need to recognize that. And if you need more specifics as to what that money might be used for, Marty, I can get that to you. You're muted.
Still getting me.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just, I mean, you get what you pay for sometimes. And if it's free, that's how it goes. But yeah, I think we could pull this together if we if we put out within two weeks. I think, Lynn, we could pull that together and and look at if we could do an allocation of some funds to start them off. Again, it goes along with with some of the cost to actually bring it and actually get the program going. So, yeah, I think we can, we go, we do that. So. Yeah, but I think we should deal with the money once we get the names and pull all the, you know, then we can sit down and discuss the actual charge and do that. But yeah, but if you guys want to, if you want to make a motion right now to to allow me to go out and 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 you know, send out a Zoom or an, excuse me, constant contact. Open invitation for those who want to to look at coming in. Then we'll look at the numbers and actually cut it down and 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 bring it forward. So. Does that make sense? Am I saying it right?
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Okay, all right.
Good. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Marty. Thank you, Lynn. It's more than a few people this fall told me that that broadband is a big issue here that we need to, we need to address this. So so this is the first step. So thanks.
Yeah, yeah, we missed it. Yeah, we'll get going on this one. Okay, I'll go ahead and do that. I'll send the tomorrow or Friday. We'll get that going. Put two weeks on that that request for for interest. So.
Look forward. Okay. Next agenda item, 10.3 proposed cemetery ordinance. So so where where are we with the cemetery ordinance?
Yeah, I've talked to Bernadette Elgar, who was the the former association, I think, president or chair. And we did have Tammy in here the other day in our meeting discussing some of that. I think we need to put together a a meeting with them very soon to sit down and and put together what we have from our lawyer, what we have from Bernadette, what we, what was proposed in the 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 committee versus the ordinance. And I think some of those comments, most of us have seen it. If you haven't seen it, I'll get it out to you. I remember, I thought we had discussed that in the last meeting, but I'll make sure that everyone has a a chance to look at that. It's a working document. So I'm not really, and it has comments from the lawyers. I have to make sure it's it's not privileged to even more than the board. But anyway, but it's, 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 it's pretty common sense. It makes the ordinance so obviously superior to the committee, but leaves the committee with a lot more of the the actual down and dirty work of 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 operations and 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 support to the sexton and so on. We don't want to make the ordinance so specific that every time a change, it needs to be adjusted, that we have to go back and hold a town meeting to change the ordinance. And that was the general recommendation, I think, but for both Bernadette and 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 Attorney DeBella. So I've got some of that. So what I want to do is is kind of condense some of that, take a shot at pulling that together and then having a meeting, board of selectmen meeting with the with Bernadette and with with Tammy and Bill Potter, invite them in to to actually hammer out the some of the final aspects of this and also the the funding and the transfer of the money. I know that Tammy Potter is a little concerned about how we actually do that. I think we just need to sit down and and go over that with her, with the plan. And so I will, I will probably send a note out to you all by tomorrow or Friday to to get a date. And and when you're going, I'll be available to do that and sit down for an hour or so and and actually chop on the ordinance. Get get it in some kind of shape. We need to do this quickly so that we have somebody in place. We can get that to town meeting and then go ahead and hire a sexton. And we're going to do, need to do that in the next couple of months because by one April, obviously, we'll need someone in place. I think we can do it. You know, but I I think we just need to, you know, kind of just bear down on getting this ordinance in 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 shape.
So Marty, did I hear you correctly saying that you are going to try and pull out the rules and regulations and then leave the ordinance with the sort of the the bones of what needs to be in the ordinance, that you're going to take a stab at that?
Correct, correct. Bernadette sent a couple of notes back to me. Yeah, I'm sorry to be no over. But yeah, I've got what they've got there. I see what they're looking at. I've been looking at, I think I see a way we can, we can divide up between the committee and then the ordinance itself. And I'll just put it together and then I'll offer you guys and then we'll as as a board and with with the cemetery individuals, we'll sit down and and make sure we we cover that. So yeah, I'll make some, I'll make the recommendation to you guys for consideration at the board of selectmen meet, special meeting we have for the cemetery ordinance.
Okay. And the other question I had was who's going to write the sexton job description? Is that something that Joyce would do, that you would do, that you want one of us to do it? I mean?
We could, we could talk about, we could pull it together. I've got, we've got a couple of different towns that we've looked at their different section things. And this was back last fall. I mean, I was looking at stuff just as a, as a a friend to Tammy and Bills and and some other people that were interested in it. But yeah, we'll need to actually be specific because there were things about an assistant and so on. We have to look at the funding issue. So we could talk about that actually at the 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 meeting that we we have with them and talk about that specifics. And then we can, yeah, if if someone else wants to help out on that one, I have no issue with that for sure. But but yeah, we'll, we'll need to tighten up on how we do the the, you know, the job description for the sexton. I think it's pretty they're pretty straightforward jobs, but just want to make sure we don't miss anything.
Okay.
And then the composition of the committee too. We'll have to figure out the composition of the committee.
So Marty, what, you know, what kind of timeframe is this? Is another, another meeting just with the cemetery?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Sometime after February second, you think?
Oh, yeah, sometime after February second. Yeah.
Sooner thereafter, I would think.
Sooner thereafter. And I think it'd be a short meeting. It's not, it, we'll do this as a a special, special that could be talking about before, trying to keep it really to to one special issue. I think we can, we can hammer a lot of this within an hour. If, if, you know, getting it organized to understand what the committee would need to do and what the ordinance really needs to to say as an ordinance versus, you know, the committee. And then we can, we can work on that. Then we can chop on stuff and and come back and and then pull it into a probably a regular meeting by February or before February, I guess, actually, or by February, I would think. And then they take it to a town meeting and then hire a sexton, yeah, in by March. I would think we could do that.
Well, just, I'll just throw this out just because I think it's really important that we do this sooner than later. I can meet nearly any day next, you know, the following week. We're talking Monday, February the fifth. Four thirty on. I don't know if that's good for for you, but if it's going to be a short meeting, I could definitely do like a four thirty. But 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 good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll get Lynn, are you, are you pretty well okay with the?
Yeah, after four thirty, I'm fine.
Okay. Yeah.
And I really, I actually was playing around with like a timeline because I, I believe if we have like dates, it'll help us stick to dates. And I work backwards from April and I'm happy to share this with you, but I was thinking that we need to, we really need to work to get the ordinance approved as soon as possible. And then mid to late February and then, you know, mid to the beginning of mid February to the beginning of March, really we have to stick to our same policy of advertising for sexton and and start the interviews and then hopefully have a new sexton in place by March fifteenth.
Right. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that was the same kind of timeline I'm looking at by mid March, no later than have have someone in place to pick up and get ready by one April for sure. Yeah.
In my correspondence back and forth with Bernadette, she made a mention of a of a Google sheet that Jean may have been developing with with salary information from different sextons. Has that, has that been discovered?
I've got the file, but I don't find that information in that file. There was some notes, but I didn't see anything. I I saw a couple of, there was a basically kind of a spreadsheet, I guess, that did have information from other towns, but there was no, they had data from other towns, but no information behind that data. So but it, yeah, I I've got that. I did look at that. I did find the files. So yeah, we got to work, do some work on that, but we'll, we'll do that concurrently as we we develop the ordinance and the committee and look at job description. We could pull that together. Just takes a few phone calls. So.
Great. Thank you. Anything else on this?
There's Tammy and Bernadette up here.
Tammy Bernadette up here. If we're okay. You want to talk at the end? You want, we can talk.
God, you're going to call me when you're going to have the meeting.
Okay, we're going to call Tammy when we have the meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, I didn't see, I couldn't, I can't.
Also, I did have a very good conversation with Attorney DeBella last Friday. And I I said that, you know, it would be very handy if we could all meet. And so we're all hearing the same thing at the same time. And I didn't know if you wanted to include him in the meeting because he had he had some specific concerns. We we pretty much agreed on everything. But I just don't know if, you know, you would want him.
Do you got that, Marty?
Yeah, I can certainly, I can certainly look at talking to him about this. But we'll do that. Yeah, I'll give him some time. If he, if he feels it's important to come in, we certainly will have him added to that.
Great.
And then just to clarify that Jane Hanley is the president of the Kent Cemetery Association, and I'm just the secretary, the spokesperson. That's why I've done the work.
Yeah, yeah. The person who does the work here. Okay. So is the association still alive or is it, has it dissolved?
It is still alive and I, I, that was part of my conversation with Attorney DeBella is that once the ordinance is done, once the town meeting is done, once the money has been transferred, he will assist the Kent Cemetery Association in in dissolving it.
Okay.
And we will no longer exist.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. That's the timeline for that. Okay. Well, yeah, you'll always exist, but not, yeah, not.
No, we're going to disappear.
Yeah, I hope not. I hope not.
I know where she lives.
Yeah, you do. Keep an eye on her. All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you for my work.
A lot of work.
Okay, if we're okay, next agenda item, 10.4 town building use policy. So Marty, it's yours.
Yeah, we're still, I'm still chopping on that. I did talk to Attorney DeBella the other day about some of the things that we've discussed about. Again, this will all be, as soon as I can get this together, I think probably by end of February, our, our, our next formal meeting, I'll have something together. I was hoping to have something together today. I just didn't, didn't get a chance to do it all. But yeah, everything seems to be going okay as far as use with the insurance and so on. I did want to clear up with the attorney, the whole idea of what kind of background checks and things we needed to do on people and so on. I think we can, excuse me, I'm sorry, I think we can work that out too. So but I will, I will promise I will have this first draft for you guys to look at by February, but continuing to open it up to organizations and working with with Joyce, our board of select, admin person, we can, we can work with the with the groups. It's, we've had to pick an uptick in people asking to use the facilities, which is great. So I I think that's great. Well, but there's no issues that come up so far that we've, that we've had. And attorney was asking me if there's, we've had any issues, but nothing so far. But we want to make sure we understand who, you know, who has the first first use of the facilities, who do we support and so on. And some of that, it has to be, I guess, you know, put together and looked at by by him as well. So. That's my update on that.
Great. Okay, we'll leave that on the agenda for next time.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, so we are at 10.5 Swift House Needs Assessments. So 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 Marty and Joyce, you may have something. My, my, my selectman report is actually all about that. It's really a series of questions. So I'm going to refer to that report if that's all right in in this discussion here. But but do you have any update on Swift House Needs Assessments or or should I launch in?
Go ahead. I don't have any updates for me, except the, the meeting on the second.
Meeting on the second. Okay. Yeah, just to say that I am, I'm looking forward to the meeting on the second. I'm looking forward to getting back into the building, see, see what it looks like, to talk to an actual architect, to, and his name is what, Tim Tac, to talk to Tim. And so, yeah, I'm looking forward to to the whole board, to the Swift House Task, Task Force and for Tim to, you know, to talk about these things. So just thinking about it and thinking about, you know, my time on the Swift House Task Force and all of these things. My, my selectman report was simply this. It was simply just, because we haven't had a meeting in a long as time. And we still haven't met, I mean, whatever the last meeting was, was a while ago. So I started to to think about where other funds could come from, what is the destination of the building, what have we talked about before? So, you know, so I got on the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, the Historic Preservation website, which is right there in my report. I reached out to members of the Swift House Task Force and Mark Smith actually gave me, because I asked her, have we, when's the last time we've approached the the preservation, Historic Preservation Commission? And it was a while ago. And I just asked if we had any contact information for anyone in that office. And it seems we do, actually. So she gave me the names of three people who I would like to contact, but only with, you know, with So she gave me the names of three people who I would like to contact, but only with, you know, with your knowledge. I mean, so Marty and Lynn, just mul this over for a second. I mean, I wouldn't mind contacting people from the state just to see about, you know, are we, we're not on the state registry, we're not, you know, historic, you know, site for, for the state. Would you be interested in me talking to people about that and what, because whatever, because if we can get on that, that might, that might change Tim Tac's vision of what he needs to do. So, so we've, we've reached out to them before. Do you mind if I do that?
Neither of us. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, all right. So I will follow up. I have previous emails from, from Mark Smith to them and I will, I'll follow up and let you, let you both know the next time we meet.
And I would also ask you to also talk to the one that is in charge of the planning grant.
Yes.
See if we might be possible for that, for the State Historic Preservation Office.
Planning Grant, the State Historical Preservation, yes. I am going to look at that. I also had heard a lot about steep grants in the last two years, Small Town Economic Assistance Program. So I was on that website, just looking at that. And I just had a, had a, just a general question. So have, maybe to Joyce, because you've, you've been dealing with this building and all of this the longest time. Have, have we formally applied for a steep grant? Have we applied to any grants for either this building or, or other projects? I mean, I'm not a grant writer. I, I, I can research grants, but I'm not at all fluent in the language of grant writing and all this. Is there any information from the past?
So the town heads applied for and received several steep grants. The community house and the Swift House itself did receive a steep grant. I don't remember the exact year, but when the last renovation was done, we really did like the front entryway, that was done with Wes Wierich, who did that renovation.
Yes, yes.
That was a steep grant as well. The conversation did come up. I inquired with Jean two years ago to ask and at that point, really probably not ready to apply for the steep grant because we didn't have all the specifics.
Yeah.
Didn't really have the cost estimate, so we will be ready this time because you can't apply for it.
Sure.
Later in the year, so.
Who, who applies for these? Like, I mean, does Wes Wierich do this? Do we have someone?
He can apply for by the town.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and you'll find a, a pretty good grant writer and, and, and at least Kent expert on our grants and stuff in Barbara Herbst. She's been doing a lot of work. She went to a lot of training, I know, a few years back on grants writing, especially for the streetscape and some of the other things. But yeah, Barbara and I have talked about that, but Barbara, if you have anything you want to add, you're welcome to buzz in.
Nope, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, yeah, but it, the date, the timeframe is, is June, July for, for steep grant submission. So we have a little bit of time to pull together, but I think that's a great idea.
That was my next question. So, so we're going to meet, we're going to meet with Tim in February. I have no idea how long his work is going to take. But, but it's turnaround time for a steep grant. I don't know how long it takes to write a grant. I mean, so, so assuming in, let's say, it, it takes in three months and he gives us a report in April, May. We could turn around and say, okay, let's apply for a steep grant. I don't know how long, you know, that takes to write. How long does it take to write?
It's a pretty, yeah, that's not a super complex.
It's not complex, okay. So this is something that we could do in the near future. So this is not something that, that's going to wait a year or two or three?
No.
Okay, all right. That was, that was my big question was just, was just timing on all of this. So we do have a hand up. Zan Charity is with us tonight. Hello, Zan.
I'm, the thing I wanted to ask about with regard to Swift House and funding is what the mechanism should be to fund the actual plans and specifications that Silver Petricelli will have to do in order to get as we go forward. These are required to, to apply for state grants to fund actual work. And I would hate to see another year go by without being able to move forward from whatever plans are proposed and approved to the next step, which is the drawings and specifications to get bids to do the work so that we can use those for grant applications.
Zan, that's, that's why I, I suggested the planning grant, because that's what that planning grant from the state is all about.
Okay, and that, that's the one with the June, July deadline?
Nope, it has a rolling deadline. They meet, you have to get it to them. They meet once a month and they consider it for that month.
Great. Well, we should get on that definitely.
That's why I'm asking these questions then. So, so yeah, no, this, this is great. All this information is very good. But I just want us to have all the information. I want us to be on the same page when we meet with Mr. Tac and, and move forward. So I think that satisfies me. I have enough for the moment here. Although if Marty Lynn, you have anything else to add? Zan, anything else? You're looking forward to the second? Looking forward to seeing you on the second, Zan?
I'm now looking forward to getting in the building again after such a long.
I hope the weather cooperates.
The, the weather will cooperate.
Of course it will. There we go.
Rust fingers. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Zan. That's all I have.
Thank you for your help and input.
Yep, thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming on. Okay, so we are now at the, the addition here of 10.6, the Kent Veterans Memorial Committee. So, so Mr. Osef's letter, which I read earlier this evening, talked about that. And so, I mean, again, the, the very end of that letter was, I'll read it again. "The newly created subcommittee of the Veterans Committee are requesting this selectmen's meeting to establish the direction and role of responsibility to the monuments. We'd also want to review the past expenditures from the veterans' account." So we could certainly do that. I don't know if the charge needs to be amended or just reiterated. The main issue why I wanted this on the agenda was that Rufus Durham used to be on this committee and is no longer. And I reread the charge from a while ago and it does say that a, a Board of Selectmen member should be on this, this committee. So, so that's my main reason for having this discussion here. One of us might want to think about being on this committee. So I don't know what your thoughts are.
I, I agree. Is it obvious that I, that I'd like to be on this committee?
Well, you are obviously the most qualified to be on it, Marty.
I know, but yeah, I've, I've watched the, you know, the individual, the building of this committee and I know how hard Andy and I know we'll hear from him in a minute here has, you know, dedicated to this and, and also the, you know, everyone within the, the veterans' community, whether they're in the Legion or not, it's been, it's been a great thing. I've had really honored to be able to speak at, at some of the ceremonies on Veterans Day and others. So, yeah, this is something that definitely is, should be, and I know it's near and dear to the heart of Kent. Kent's always supported this. So I'm happy to, to, to be representative to that. And, and I'm looking back at the, and this is in the, the packet of the August 4th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meetings, which made to create the Veterans Memorial Advisory Committee, which, and Andy will ask you if there's any updates to that committee that you want to make or any additions. Obviously, unfortunately, Dick and Charlotte are, are along with us, but as, as other members. But, and we can set a meeting for sure, maybe even one of the special meetings, we could add this in if there's a specific recommendation on the charge on, on a function that you think the, that we should do as a Board of Selectmen to the committee itself or help support the committee. So anyway, I'll, I'll stop there and see if Andy has anything else he wants to add.
Do you want us to reread the charge?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I want to reread the charge. That's okay. So this is from the August 4th, 2022 Regular Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes. "Jean Speck made a motion to create the Veterans Memorial Advisory Committee of the Board of Selectmen. The committee's charge is to investigate and make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen on the addition of names of veterans to add to the monuments in the future and to advise the Board of Selectmen on matters related to the Veterans Memorial membership as appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And shall be comprised of one member of the Board of Selectmen and a minimum of two military veterans. The committee, however, may be increased up to seven members. Rufus Durham seconded the motion. The motion carried." So that's the charge that was passed.
Well, we wound up establishing accountability too, but that wasn't in there. So, and we, you know, everything we closed, we closed the account, the town has control of it. It's called a better, there's a better account there now. Barbara handles that, I guess. But we need, the account, you know, we had a great charge with Dick, Lynn, Lindsay. You know, we had him for 10 years. Everything was accounted for. This isn't happening. I don't know what we spent last year. But again, we did not have a slight, we didn't have a meeting after we became, had, had Margaret's committee. So that's, that's what we're trying to establish, accountability, that kind of thing.
So when you say accountability, you're, you're specifically speaking about the money?
Accountability and what we do with the monuments and everything like that. Because if we had to put a name on there, we had to do a repair and heaven forbid, somebody must have moved that someday, you know, the whole mine. We put a lot of money into that. We had a lot, a lot of volunteers, including Marga, you know? And it was, it was 15 years of work, establishing, checking everybody's background, DVDs, Ortiz, to prove that they went into the service from Kent. That's what it's.
So do you want that wording that you guys have used about, you know, what, who is qualified to be on the monument?
Right, right.
We want that in, in.
Right on the front of mine, that's for all Kent veterans who entered the military at peacetime under war. And we put out about five or six names a few years ago, the peacetime guys.
Right.
Yeah. So who knows? We still have a lot of people out there coming into the service from Kent and when they come back, maybe they want to be out of the mine. And they would come up, they would come under what they call, since the Gulf War started, they still would be under that category. So they still would go out of the mines. And we pray now, we've been charged about $100, $150. It was hard to get somebody down here from Cornwall, you know, to put one, one sample.
One name.
One name in there, you know? But the biggest problem we had initially was the wrong names put up on the monuments of people who went out of service. And that happened before I came around.
Okay. Andy, could I ask a question? What, what is the last time the committee has met?
What was that?
What was the last time the committee met?
Our committee?
Yes.
Yeah, last November 4th, 2022. That's the name, that's, we had that forum, you know, we turned everything over. That was the day.
That was, oh, yes.
Okay, then I, I'd like the recommendation then, Andy, that you call a meeting of the committee itself. And then we can sit down and figure out exactly what the committee needs to do and what we need the Board of Selectmen to need to weigh in on. But it sounds like some of the issues you've just been describing are, are within the charge of what the committee is there to do. And we can make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen if there's something that we need, the committee needs support to do. Does that, does that make sense to you?
Could we come to your office and do it with you, all the members, Mike and?
Sure. Yeah, we can, yeah, we can have a meeting. Yeah, absolutely. We can have a meeting in the town hall. Yeah.
So Marty, did I, did I hear that you would like to be the Board of Selectmen representative to this committee?
Correct.
Then I'm going to make a motion, if that's okay?
And I'll second.
I'm going to make a motion to appoint Marty Lindemeyer to the, the Veterans Memorial Committee. That's it. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Hi.
I can second it and, all right. So Marty, you are on that, that committee, so.
There you go. Thank you.
Andy, feel free, on his office.
So, so could we also just make sure that the committee gets some kind of a financial report on that veterans' fund?
Right.
Yeah, cool.
Like how much, how much money's in it and what did the chain, I don't, and maybe the committee could figure out how often we want to have a report, you know, whether it's every quarter or every year or whatever.
We don't know.
Yeah, there's not much.
That last year after we took, you know, turns it over to the town.
Right, okay.
Right, we'll, we'll get an updated report from Barbara and, and the status of everything there. And then we'll bring it to the committee, show that and any questions or issues that they have, then I'll bring it back to the board if there's any other further discussion.
Great.
But it might be.
How's this? Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
It might be something that we need to sort of say they should get a report on a certain time period, whether it's every quarter, every year, just so they don't have to ask for it. They just automatically get the report.
Sure, yeah, yeah, makes sense. I'll, I'll, again, let me see what the committee really looks at, because there's not a lot of changes that happen, as Andy just said. You know, but see if they want a quarterly or, I'll get their idea of what they think they'd like to see and then I'll come back and, and we'll work it out, make sure that it's, it's an automatic. Yeah, but if there's a, I don't think there'll be an issue with getting your updated reports from Barbara, I don't think.
When we closed it down, there's two boxes for everything. It's up to the Kent Historical Society, so. Back in that for 15 years.
Yeah. Okay.
Long process.
Great. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are at, now at agenda item 11, Selectmen Reports. Marty, do you have any reports out there?
I, I apologize. I, I forgot that I have to put my support in the, in the box 48 hours before too, so I apologize to my fellow selectmen. The only thing that, you've heard most of everything that I would probably talk about, except there's one additional thing. You know, we've been, one of the things we've all talked about, I think, over the time is, is the access to the river. You know, we've got a great community and it's a beautiful river and we probably don't use it as much as we could. So I was just wondering, doing some research on the potential for kayak canoe, we call car top access, which is not a boat launch per se, but, but an area where you could safely put a kayak or canoe in the water, maybe even a small boat, I don't know, you know, but, but something off of a car top. And that's how it's actually described. And lo and behold, last night, I was talking to Barbara and I looked down and I talked to her about that. And she pointed to a, a booklet that has a, supposedly a grant in there from the park, I think it's Department of the Interior Park, National Park Service. Supposedly a grant that's been worked up on car top carriers and it says for North Kent, the old, if you will, the dump road, but the old North Kent Road access. So I pulled that out and I, I started perusing it last night before I caught my way to oblivion. But there's a potential, I think, here, working with, I think, Park and Rec Conservation Commission and so on, to actually look at, at the rejuvenating of, of maybe something we already have in place or maybe we've already received, we've just never spent. I have, that's what I have to make some phone calls and I just couldn't call today. I didn't have the voice for it. But I'm going to, I have some numbers and some old, they're a few years old, but I'm going to track these, these, this folks down and figure out, do, does the town of Kent actually have a grant somewhere? And it looked to be about $250,000 in that range.
Really?
All right, so, but potentially.
Here's Cross.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a lot of canoes, it's a lot of canoes.
Okay, this would be great if we already had one and Barbara says often these grants don't actually go away. They just get overrun and you have to dig them back out to activate them again. So this would be a wonderful thing. Now, there's a, I had some other ideas and I looked at, National Park Service has a booklet on how you make access points to rivers and so on. I also looked at Connecticut State. They have a new park and a brand new park and recreation grant program that's out. And one of the grants, and, and I don't remember exactly which park it was, but it was for access to the Husatonic. So there's some money out there to actually get there and I think that's something that this town would really benefit from is access to the Husatonic, access to the beautiful river for the recreational aspect, the educational aspect of how, setting up, you know, conservation sites along the river, down, you know, below the bridge, down towards the Bowls Bridge area where the eagles and egrets are, where, you know, the, the beautiful fish and wildlife that we see there, that everybody loves to watch when they ride a bike down Sketicoke Road or, or walk or whatever. So there's a potential for us to really get something going here. And I'm really, I'm going to jump into that one because it's, it's something that's near, dear to my heart. My dad was a conservation educator who, who did that exactly, that, that exact thing back in the early 60s, way before, and I keep saying this, but it's way before Earth Day created. My father had a Conservation Day that he put out every year and it was great in Hurkaway County, New York, where I grew up. So I'd love to have that legacy and, and carry on here in Kent. But hey, if we've. But if we've got a grant that's already ready to go and we can rejuvenate that, or at least find something similar, I think it's going to benefit the town. So that is really the only other thing that I would have added to my report for this week.
That's, that's great news, so I'm glad, glad to hear that, actually.
Yeah.
Good. All right, so that's Marty, my report, you've heard it already, it's all about Swifts, and I think a lot of my questions were answered. Lynn, you have a report here.
I do. So one thing I wanted to say is tomorrow, there's a luncheon at the community house at noon, and it's sponsored by Park and Rec as a farewell to Jared Kaczynski, and he's going to be there. So if anybody wants to pop by and say, you know, thank you to Jared, you're definitely welcome, food's going to be served at noon, starting at noon. So I encourage that. And the other thing, the main, there's some, some new programming getting going, the youth basketball is up and running now, and swim prep programs are going to begin next month, hopefully on February 14th. And then there's also, I didn't put this in here because we don't know exactly, but we did agree on Monday night to do like three open skate sessions. We're still working on finalizing that, but hopefully it'll be on Sunday afternoons. So that's coming up next. And then Bunko is a new senior program, and it's described as a social dice game. They're going to have that on Thursday, February 15th. And I got to tell you, the CCM conference that I went to was amazing, the new officials, it was very, very helpful, and I put a bunch of stuff in my report. But it was fast, the historian in me was fascinated to hear about the history of town meetings and government. Probably nobody else liked it, but I thought it was great. And the municipal finance was also interesting. The town of East Haddon, there were three people, and they all, at one point, worked for the town of East Haddon, which is a relatively small town, and they had, they shared a bunch of resources, which I think definitely, not that we should look at it and try and implement something right away, but it's something we should look at maybe for in the future, because they had, they had done a lot of work to try and make things flow a little more streamlined, and they had a lot of documentation, so I would urge you to take a look at that.
The one thing that stood out with me was that all towns in Connecticut, except for 10, operate under a charter, and Kent is one of those 10. What are the pros and cons of having a charter, not having a charter? Do we have any idea? Has this ever come up? The fact that we don't have a charter? Joyce?
Yeah, no, and I should have mentioned also, I went to the community or the Council of Small Towns Conference, it was similar to the CCM Conference, of just a different date, I was out of town on that 6th. And we went over pretty much the same thing, but yeah, it was, we really didn't get into exactly what the benefits of the charters are. I think it just, yeah, I can't even speculate, but I'll get some information, I'll see if Randy can give, our attorney can give us some, some advice on that. Yeah, I left for that same question. And I found that the Council of Small Towns wanted to be excellent, especially the one on Freedom of Information, and, and they were, one on grants too, that was probably not as good as the scene, it sounds like you went to Lynn, but it was, it was still good. And we had to shut down early because of the ice storm that was coming that day, so some of the things got truncated. But I do have, again, I have also those, I got that this week, the presentations sent to me, so we'll put those on our town website for anyone to look at if they want to look. Some were long and boring, but, but they were good overall. And I agree with you, Lynn, I'm a historian too, so I love the idea of what New England has done. But the educational process and putting out notes that we do from Town Hall, you guys recommended that we do that for the town meeting, certainly made the town meeting on an iffy night quite, quite lively and certainly a pretty full meeting, so, room anyway, and that was pretty good. And maybe, I'll just clarify a little bit of that, I did talk to Attorney DeBella regarding the ability to vote on Zoom during a town meeting. There was an exception during the beginning of COVID, because as COVID got going that first six months or so, executive action that was done by the governor that has since been rescinded. So there is no state regulation policy or ordinance or whatever on how to vote for Zoom, so we're not really allowed to vote during a Zoom meeting. It's difficult for the registrar to be able to make any kind of determination of the actual person doing any voting through a Zoom or any kind of online meeting process, so you have to be back in, in person. And that's something that, again, as we go into the budget season, into the town meeting again, and the vote here in May, we'll make sure we continue to educate the public. So that, you know, we know we had a little issue last year, and we'll continue until we can firmly educate people, but those are, those are some great notes, Lynn, and I, you know, I think we'll, we'll keep pushing the education, get people to understand how it works in New England.
We have our ways, we have our ways.
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
Our uniqueness.
We are different, that's for sure.
Thank you, Lynn, it was great, I loved reading your report, it was good. So, okay, so we're done with that, we're at 12 public comments, so now the public can talk about anything they would like to talk about.
I think so.
Mr. Andy, please, you can come to the podium.
People can hear you on the recording.
Yes.
I got cut off a couple of weeks ago. Got rid of your committee meeting early July, we get to signatures.
Here you are, here you are.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then I'll go back a long time ago, and it's a long time ago. The resident trooper had to live in Kent, or in the town that he was serving in. He had me on call 24 hours a day. A lot of times, there was a fatal accident, you got signed to it, didn't matter, there was no such thing as overtime. We had a constable, and auxiliary trooper, Ralph Matson was a constable, and Dean Bowe was a trooper, or auxiliary trooper. And they did all the hard work on weekends and, you know, helped me on traffic problems and fare and things like that. And that doesn't apply anymore. Now, you got a resident trooper, he doesn't live here, I knew everything that was going on in this town. I learned how to pack, you know? But anyway, the Kent, the resident trooper again, I think the last one was David Brockavansky, and Bob there, that lived in town, that has, has been all in effect. But resident trooper is responsible for what happens in this town, he's very interested with what's going on. And a lot of people want to apply for it, but you get some people maybe aren't that good. But I just want to comment about Trooper Fisher, I think he's done a great job, but he's overloaded, and I'd like to see a second president for a lot of reasons, traffic is the biggest one, it's a, it's a real mess out there. You're afraid to drive on the roads, and if you live on South Kent Road, Street 41 or, or, or 7, it's awful, especially on weekends. You're afraid, you are afraid of moving in your car. I'll go back to 2010. Board of Selectmen had to remove the resident trooper in 2006, and Bruce Adams was one of the signups that let's get rid of him. All right, so for four years, we didn't have one. We started an informational town meeting, we requested signatures, which we could do at that time, an informational meeting. People came here and they heard the pros and cons, and most of the people wanted a resident trooper back, so it got back, was put back in the budget. And Bruce Adams, it's like I've said, started getting many calls, I think Joyce could attest to that, and all of a sudden he wanted a resident trooper back. But I just want a second one. I just, and I'm requesting, I know I request to put this in a budget, but the paper I gave you by Attorney DeBella, I think, did you ever see that, Marty?
I don't remember seeing anything from.
It was dated September 12, 2023. So it was prior.
Yeah, Marty's not on.
I wrote one for you, but you're not here. Basically, go ahead, read it to them.
Sorry, read it to them?
Yeah.
Would you like to hear this?
You're kind of funny, I don't have it.
No, this is a discussion, this is a, is a public comment, so I'll take it and read it later, Andy, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I mean.
For a formative reason, maybe again, and that way we can call people, but the selectmen have to go along with it, so that's fine, kind of that.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, please send that on to Marty.
No, I'm not.
Okay, great.
You can have it.
Okay. Any more public comment? Anyone remember the public here? Okay, any more public comment out there in Zoomland?
Yep, I want to address the discussion about the veterans' memorial funding. There is a little pot of money that the selectmen have access to. Can you hear me?
No.
No?
Yeah, I can hear you.
So there's a little pot of money that the selectmen have access to, access to, some of it comes from recordings on the land records and monthly, it's based on statute, but monthly when the town clerk gives her remittance to my office, there's a portion of it that goes to this fund. There was some money left for use at the community house for, I believe, speakers and things of that nature. There was a recycling grant, when the money came from the veterans' committee, that went into another pot that the selectmen have discretionary oversight of. Then there was a small discretionary fund. Every month, when this gets updated, the first selectman gets a copy of this, so this gets issued every month. You guys are just so new that there hasn't been enough cycles going on yet for y'all to get all this information, but this information gets updated and provided monthly. So currently, there's $3,824.02 in the Veterans Memorial Committee fund account that was given to the town back in January of '23, and the funds were transferred over. So I just wanted to point that out, I'll leave a copy of this on Marty's desk, and if everybody else wants a copy, I can email you as well.
Thank you, yes, I'd love an email, I'd love an email, thank you.
Definitely.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah, we'll put it in the, we'll put it in the meeting note, the minutes of the meeting as well. Thank you, Barbara.
That's great, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay.
Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
The last thing I have for anybody still on here is that, you know, we do have Trooper Fisher's going away tomorrow between 2:00 and 4:00. He requested a little bit earlier in the afternoon, I guess he wasn't, he's not, if you know Andy at all, he's not comfortable with the big crowd, and he didn't want a big to do, but there's a lot of people that will stop by and say thank you, I'm sure. And also, and this is the last minute thing, the temporary replacement, our TDY, as they call it, Temporary Duty Officer, is Vicky Donahoe, she's a trooper, a veteran trooper who lives in Sherman, and she's been here before, a lot of people do know her, she'll be there as well tomorrow, she wasn't going to be able to make it before, but now she is, and she'll be taking over, I guess effectively on Monday, as our, as our resident trooper in place here, and she'll be attending a bunch of the things coming up in the next month, the Bob Bauer funeral on the 3rd, which is, you know, going to, there's going to be a big, I'll be attendance by a lot of organizations to support Bob, he was former selectman, fire department, one of veteran, we believe, close to one of our, if not our last, one of the few we have, World War II veterans. But anyway, so the troopers will be there to continue to function until the troupe, troupe up in Litchfield can get some people, really a couple of weeks, I heard before, they'll have some candidates to share with us a little bit, I hope, at least give us some information on some of them, and then let, let us know who the selection is to replace Andy. But, but tomorrow, 2:00 to 4:00, come on, stop by, I have some puncher cookies, and I wish him well, so.
That's great, thank you for reminding me, it was, you asked about that.
Great, great.
I think we might have one more coming.
There's a quick one, Lynn Harrington, I was just wondering if the veterans' money, like, went to general fund, or does it have a line item?
That's from Barbara, I think. Barbara, did you hear that, Barbara?
Yeah, I just pointed out that it has its own, it's in the special fund money, the selectmen have discretionary.
Okay.
Yeah, good question. Okay, all right, I think that's all, so it is 8:15 PM on this day, and I'm going to call for adjournment, motion to adjourn. So, all in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous. 8:15.
Thanks, Glenn, for.
Thank you, Marty, thank you, please get better.
I know you did a great job, I appreciate it.
Get better on there. We need you back here, we need you back here.
I'll be back tomorrow morning, but yeah, hopefully. Well, these people, some people are happy I'm not talking, I've heard that.
Say it himself, say it himself.
My wife is out there smiling, you know, I'll be quiet after this. Hey, thank you, guys, and everyone, have a safe, safe evening, and we'll see you soon. All right.
Great job, well done.
You too, all, everybody, thanks, Joyce, as well.